I call this meeting to an end. This is the regular session of the Mayor and Council of the City of Bisbee, County of Cochise, and State of Arizona, to be held on Tuesday, July 16, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. in the City Hall Building, 915 South Octoberville Road, Bisbee, Arizona. Ms. Coronado, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Louis Pollock.
Here.
Councilmember Joni Jacomino.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Higgins.
Here.
Mayor David M. Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns is excused. Councilmember Joan Hanson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Anna Klein.
Here.
City staff Stephen Pocken, interim city manager, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Carrie Bagley, finance director, Joelle Landers, personnel director, Jesus Harrow, public works director, Alberti Chave, police chief, George Castillo, fire chief.
Thank you, ma'am. For a moment of silence, I'd like us to reflect on the fact that thanking our public safety officials, our professionals, and all that they do, we've had, then I'm aware, seven wildfires in Cochise County in just the last two days. And so, these guys are busy both the fireside and the law enforcement side, and I'd like us to thank them and to reflect on that. Thank you, would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, welcome, everybody. I would like to indicate, or I will indicate, that I'll be pulling item number five.
Item.
Item number five. It's a presentation by ERD.
Item 2D.
And... Yeah, they're separated out nicely, thank you. And item 2D, as in David, under the consent agenda. Yes. Got him? Got him, get him, good. And we apparently have to call to the public. We have items, people have to speak on specific items. With that, we'll go to a once payable.
I am moving the EPA accounts payable in the amount of $226,016.16. May I second?
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. The pay accounts payable. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion very unanimous. Approval of the consent agenda. Item A. Approval of the minutes of the special session of mayor and council held on June 2, 2019, at 5:30 p.m. B. Approval of the minutes of the regular session of mayor and council held on July 2, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. C. Approval of the minutes of the special session of mayor and council held on July 9, 2019, at 5:30 p.m. E. Approval of the appointment of Dwayne Wallace to the Community Sustainability Commission. F. Approval of the appointment of Marsha Mayer to the Parks and Recreation Committee. G. Approval of the resignation of Louis Pollock from the Planning and Zoning Commission. H. Approval of a park facility and right-of-way use permit for a central school project for the use of grassy park for the annual plain air festival to be held on Saturday, October 12, 2019, from 12:00 p.m. noon to 5:00 p.m. Council, does anybody wish any item pulled for discussion? Here we now entertain a motion.
I will approve the consent agenda items A through C and E through H.
Second. Ms. Coronado.
Councilmember Pollock.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacomino.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item number three, old business. Discussion on possible approval of the municipal effluent option agreement between Cochise County and the City of Bisbee for the five-year term. And we have several speakers that I'll ask to take their three minutes and to address this prior. And I just want to make sure that everybody is, that we're all in the same playing field here, that this is an option agreement. This isn't a sales agreement. All right. With that, Mr. Cook, Matt Cook, welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, Mayor of the City Council, Ashley, city manager. Bisbee is especially blessed. The City of Bisbee is roughly 700 feet higher than our aquifer, which can be recharged from our wastewater, and wastewater doesn't even have to be processed, as it has been, at a very high expense. And in fact, EPA had it barely approved for constructed wetlands. Bisbee has wonderful things going forward. My concern about this whole effluent issue is there are questions that haven't been really answered, and there's due diligence that has not been done, a lot of it that's not been done for years and years. Where did the contract for the Bisbee effluent project really come from? Who were its authors? Were there work sessions for the Bisbee effluent project? Was this project penciled into the county budget without work sessions with the City of Bisbee? Can the county create certificates of water adequacy for this effluent without building a pipeline? That's a real serious question, and the answers are up at ADEQ, ADWR, and at the office of the Attorney General. Can the certificates of adequacy be purposed for development outside the Bisbee Naco sole source aquifer? And finally, will the county share liability for this effluent, should the city be sued by landowners or other stakeholders? And finally, on this, the terms of this contract obligate the city for at least 25 years. It contains a poison pill that could cost millions of dollars to the city if they were to back out. Bisbee is the only city in the state that signs contracts without exit clauses or terms to renegotiate the contracts. And one final thing, on CNN, and you can look it up, it says whistleblower says he was pressured by Trump administration to reverse environmental decision. This is for that big nettle village. In the summer of 2017, Arizona developer Mike England's proposed housing and golf course project in the desert was facing a roadblock because of a decision by the Department of the Interior. A field supervisor for the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service had determined that it was reasonably certain that threatened and endangered species could be harmed. It goes on that this is, again, one of those political things, which of course ties President Trump into it.
Thank you, sir.
Be careful what you do.
Thank you, sir.
You will.
I would reiterate that we're not talking about a 25-year contract tonight. We're talking about a five-year option. And just, a lot of your questions would have been answered if you had attended the work sessions, there were work sessions on this over the last two-year period. Thank you, sir. Kato Daley, welcome, Ms. Daley.
Thank you. Thank you, council. Let's see, I'm going to just repeat some of the things that we heard in the last session, because I think they're worth repeating, just to kind of keep this clear in our heads, that we're being asked to contribute some of our effluent to the river, and I think that's a good thing. If Bisbee doesn't provide some water to that stretch of the river that's down by the Herbert Palme's area, we are going to be contributing to help to killing of cottonwoods, to the willows, to the vegetation, and the animals that depend on that source of water. The water's not coming down from Mexico as it has been. We don't quite know why, totally agriculture, mining, and certainly the climate has something to do with it. But what we do know is that section of the river is declining because of lack of water. And by Bisbee providing some of our effluent to that section, we're going to be helping to keep that river going. One of the things that struck me, there was a panel at the Royal a few weeks ago, some biologists and colleagues there, as well as some accounting, and there was an aquatic biologist there who said, you know, if part of the riparian system starts to decline, it takes a long time for us to bring it back, if we can ever bring it back. So I think that this is an opportunity that Bisbee can be a part of and help it to protect that section of the river. But I also want us to keep in mind that we also need to do our part as well as individuals. Every time we turn on the tap, the water that comes out of that tap, we live in the services of watershed, is water that would normally be going to the river. So I think that certainly the City of Bisbee with our use of the effluent can help be part of the solution, as well as us as individuals. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Steve Daley, welcome, Mr. Daley.
Mayor, council, city manager, help of the body, sorry, you guys doing tonight? I'm from Naco, and I'm just addressing, whose water is it anyway? Whose water is it anyway? Water is purchased by citizens of Bisbee. It is collected and treated in a facility paid for by the citizens of Bisbee. It is treated by personnel paid for by the citizens of Bisbee. So in my mind, the citizens of Bisbee own the water, and not the city council, but they are elected to make informed, responsible decisions about things that are publicly owned by the body. Tonight, they will be trying to decide what is the best available water management practice as it applies to effluent disposal. Intelligent, responsible, ecologically minded officials concerned with best available practices don't use confusing speculative models containing only cherry pick data. Carefully assembled so officials can do otherwise intelligent people who are not educated in intricate complexities of these sciences into believing that their will is being represented. Represented, excuse me. Intelligent, responsible, ecologically minded officials concerned with best available water management practices do not create two and a half miles of giant, weakly rooted vegetation that poses a serious potential flood threat in case of large rainfall. It also does not create blockages to the main rain channel that supplies the nutrients and soil destined for the support of the Upper San Pedro River naturally from actually reaching their destination. Intelligent, responsible, ecologically minded people do not create two and a half miles of effluent dependent wildlife habitat and contract to remove two-thirds of that supply without considering the effect of the already established fish, crayfish, birds, and other species that have become dependent on it for life support. I also want to stabilize the Upper San Pedro River basin, but not by pumping treated water pumped from our Bisbee Naco aquifer into the Upper San Pedro River basin. We need to keep our water here recharging, our own separate sole source international aquifer. The water should reach and flow into and along the river naturally. Subsurface ground flow and storm waters from upper tributaries and headwaters laden with nutrients, soil, and organic matter necessary for the maintenance and nourishment flowing directly and unimpeded in the San Pedro River basin where it's sorely needed to sustain the lush and vibrant growth necessary for healthy and protected riparian environments. Not only do we not want to impede the flow of the San Pedro River with useless fences, but we must also be careful about how we manage aquifer recharges on our side so that needed basic necessities for the river's health are not impeded to the point that lack of nutrients and not water becomes the issue.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Daley. I'm going to, as we're aware, at the request of the council, Mr. Pocken contacted Ms. Ann Roberts, an attorney, to review this contract for the City of Bisbee, and I'd like Ann, if she would, to give us your take on the review.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. So I was retained, as you said, to review this option agreement. The version that you have in front of you tonight for passage or your consideration was, is the version that I created based on revisions of the version that county sent over. And as you said before, I think everyone needs to remember that this is just an option agreement, it's good for five years. What the city is basically saying is, we are willing to sell this 200 acre feet to the county at some point in the future. Probably a little bit of this that gets somewhat confusing is that there are terms in this option agreement that I guess the parties at this point wanted to define for future use in what is going to be named the Contemplated Effluent Agreement. That would be the other agreement that would come later on after considerable advances are made on the county's behalf. One of the big versions, or one of the big changes that I have kind of stayed steady with with this agreement is that I don't believe that the City of Bisbee should be on the hook for liquidated damages while this option agreement is in place. If the county wants to come back and discuss something in that effect, I would say, as your attorney advising you for this agreement, my position would be, if they're willing to spend some money and they notify you that they're making these expenses, and then you breach the option agreement by selling your water to someone else, and it's my understanding right now that you have enough effluent water that you can sell the 200 acre feet without any kind of issue, because there's plenty of other water still there, then, excuse me, at that point, if there were a breach, it would be for actual damages. The only thing that I'm really uncomfortable with in that previous agreement was, I don't like that liquidated damages clause that says, if something happens and you breach during the option, you might be on the hook for $7.2 million. So that's why I moved that portion of the document into the part that would be the material terms of the Contemplated Effluent Agreement. So, and because we're dealing with an odd animal here with this particular agreement, you remember that you're looking at these terms as they would go into a future agreement, however, that does not mean that you do not have the ability with that future agreement to negotiate and determine what this animal is going to look like at that particular time. So depending on when the county, when and if the county gets their ducks in a row to get the funding and stuff that they need to get this done, and then all the parties come back to the table, then at that point, you would have the opportunity to give some more input. And I did clarify in there also, even in some of these contemplated terms, that, you know, all we're going to do as the City of Bisbee would guarantee these 200 acre feet, it's going to be at market value, market value would be reevaluated every five years, if the, you know, which would be in your benefit if the value goes up, would be in the county's benefit if the value goes down. The liquidated damages, of course, this was in the original agreement and has a sunset clause of 10 years, if you were to breach after you entered into the contemplated agreement. So that's kind of why things get confusing, because we're talking about an agreement that doesn't exist right now with terms that are just kind of summarily defined in this option agreement. The other part that I think is clear in here is that it made it very clear that as long as you have additional waters above that 200, you can do whatever you want.
Yeah.
And you have anything else that...
Well, all I wanted to do is then make sure that the people understood that contemplated agreement that you're speaking of is the 25-year agreement.
Correct.
And we're speaking about a five-year option program.
Correct. Right. So the bare bones basics is, the city enters into the option agreement for five years, they're saying, sure, me agree that for five years, we will not sell all of our effluent water, we will make sure that at least we have 200 acre feet to give to the county or to sell to the county if we get to the point where we need to.
Right, it's sort of like the old first...
Right of refusal.
Right of refusal.
Exactly. Very akin to the same thing.
Okay. Council, questions?
I have a question. Yes. So as I, I'm way behind the curve on this issue because I'm new to the council, so I've got some concerns, but if in the five-year period, the pipeline is not built, is the county off the hook as far as liquidated damages or any other provisions of this option?
Well, the county does not have, there are no liquidated damages provisions for the county.
City, did I say county? I'm sorry.
Well, the way I have it written now, there aren't any liquidated damages in the version that you have with the option agreements. It would only be if the contemplated agreement were negotiated in the future.
But if the pipeline, if I'm understanding this correctly, the pipeline would be contracted and built during that five-year period, I mean, no?
I don't, I don't know. I was not part of that.
Could be, sure.
But if the money's not raised and the pipeline is not built, what happens at the end of that five years?
The option expires.
We make $35,000.
Right. The option expires.
That's what I wanted to, thank you.
I've only been kind of involved in this group, at least myself, so there probably were a lot of discussions and negotiations that we were not part of.
Anything else, Ms. Robinson?
I have a question, I don't know if you can answer this, Steve might have to answer it, it has to be the charter. The wastewater is considered a utility, is it not? So in 13.2, I believe, the charter, it says, the city shall have power to own and operate any public utility, construct and install all facilities that are reasonably needed. Lease or purchase any existing utility properties used or useful to public service. The city may also furnish service to adjacent arid territories which may be conveniently economically served by a municipality own and operate. The council may provide by ordinance for the establishment of such utility and provide for its regulation and control and the fixing of rates to be charged. The council, meaning by ordinance, provide for the extension, enlargement, and improvement of existing utilities provided by reasonable reserves for this purpose. Does that not have to go with an ordinance? Does not the council have to provide an ordinance for this to occur, and would that mean that we cannot do anything until the ordinance goes for the orders? That's just the question.
No, and that is a legal question, but I did get that question earlier, earlier today. And you were referring, I believe, to section 13 of the code. In section 7.05 of the city charter, it says actions requiring an ordinance, and paragraph B says, affect city code departments, offices, or agencies to adopt or amend a city code or establish, alter, or abolish any city department, office, or agency. I don't see in that section of the charter, we're not establishing anything, we're not altering anything.
But is it the pipe? The pipe isn't extending, that's not altering it?
The pipeline would not be the city's.
Once again, if there was a, it would appear that if there was a reason for a further action, it would be at the time of negotiation with the county for the actual five-year contract, not for a first right to...
Joni's question is about infrastructure, and we will not add into our infrastructure in the so-called contemplated agreement that infrastructure, but we own by someone else. And so all they're doing is, it's just like they're hooking their pipe to our discharge, and everything else is the opposite.
Anything else?
Yeah, right on.
Ms. Hanson? Ms. Klein?
I don't really have a question right now. I just, I think I feel a little better with fine your option as opposed to us going right into the 25.
Just a comment, if I might. Mr. Mayor, and I'll try and speak ahead, could you drop that down here, please? Thank you. There were, and I received today by email, a series of several pages worth of questions, whatevs, wherefores, all under the heading of due diligence, some of which Matt read to you during the, during his three minutes. All of these are questions that will need to be answered between now and the time that the county and the city would come back to the table to discuss the so-called contemplated agreement. We're not overlooking, forgetting, or just too dumb to do any of this stuff. There is a ton of work that will need to be done between now and the end of five years, and maybe longer. They may have to come back in five years and get another option. Nobody knows that yet. And even the exact route of a contemplated pipeline has not been determined. There are several suggested routes that could be followed. The ultimate route may not be any of those, but it may be one. And some of them are on the public right-of-way, some of them are across private land. And all of that would need to be done in advance, and then real commitments being made. Right now, what we're providing to the county is exactly what Ms. Roberts indicated in her review of the contract. It's like, we will make 200 acre feet of water available for you sometime after you've given us, given us the word that you've got, the infrastructure, the means of convenience to get it to where you want it to go. So that's, I wanted to speak to that today because the gentleman who wrote this document did quite a bit of work, and probably could have just called me and found out that, yeah, we're going to do all this stuff, it's just not part of what we're doing today, it's part of what we're doing for the next nine years. And what we do a lot of work to do.
Now, as I understand, what we have in the packet is changed from what the board supervisors has passed, that we, in passing this tonight, assuming it passes tonight, then I believe, I assume that it will go back to the board supervisors for their okay, and of course, should that not occur, then it dissolves anyway. So I'm just letting people know that, that I believe is the process. So with that, do we have a motion? Now, I move to approve the municipal new option agreement in Cochise County and the City of Bisbee for a five-year term.
I said it.
Ms. Coronado.
Councilmember Pollock.
Ms. Mayor, may I make a comment before I vote?
You may.
I'm uncomfortable. I don't feel I have enough information to make an intelligent vote on this issue. I've heard a lot from both sides, but I haven't heard everything, and I haven't had the opportunity to, the due diligence that I would like to do before I vote either name. So with that in mind, I'm going to vote nay.
Councilmember Jacomino.
Nay.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein. Mayor Smith.
Aye, motion passes 42.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes, 42.
Ms. Roberts, thank you so much for your assistance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, if you don't mind, I'll be.
Well, I figured Benson's calling.
Yes.
Drive safely, thank you.
Now that we've taken a vote, can I ask a question? So, that my concern was that we hadn't heard from the board supervisors. So, when will we know, I mean, when will they meet, when will we know if it's a wash?
Well, we had heard, this is the, what we got was the document that they passed. We amended that document so it goes back to them. So, we will know when they set up their meeting, I don't know, quite frankly, when it is, and I don't know if there's time that it will be on this next agenda for them or not, but immediately after they make their decision, then if they leave it the way it is, then it's passed. If they come back and say, no, we want a little different, then it's going to have to come back to us again. Okay? Item number four. Discussion of possible approval of resolution R-1908, a resolution of the mayor and council, city of Bisbee, county of Cochise, and state of Arizona fixing, levying, and assessing the amount to be raised by the city of Bisbee for property taxation and fixing and determining the property tax rate for the 2019, 2020 fiscal year and providing for severability. Ms. Bagley? Did you want to say what I said before? What I said before?
I'll be brief. Mayor, council, this is a resolution to increase the property tax rate for fiscal year 1920 by 2% to 2.1, sorry, 2.9152 per $100 of assessed value for $291.50 per $100. This is a maximum tax rate allowed for this fiscal year.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions, council? Mr. Pollak?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, why are you doing the maximum? It hasn't always happened, maybe the last three years it has, but.
As far as I, as I have spreadsheets, it's not a maximum.
Unfortunately, I was around a little bit longer than Carrie, and this was the maximum amount raises, how many total dollars in one year? It's always been in the neighborhood of about $20,000.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thirty.
Part of it is because adjusting it every year is, it's a two-edged sword, some years the valuation goes up, some years the valuation does not. The state legislature passed a law something in the neighborhood of eight to 10 years ago, that basically told cities and towns that if you eliminate your property tax or cut your property tax, I think you reach full amount, and you desire to get that property tax back till a later day, such as maybe during a recession, you can, you can only go in increments of 2%, okay? So, that means if I was collecting $25 a year on your property, and I decided to give you a break to $12 a year on your property, and then we had a real need to increase the tax the following year, we could only increase that $12 by about $2.40. We'd never be able, and in successive years, we'd never, ever be able to recover it. So, basically, it's a sound conservative way to make sure that your portfolio of all the revenues that you collect remains as diverse as possible, because as we all know, some sources of revenues rise and others fall. I mean, we'll have a good year on sales taxes and maybe our ambulance revenues may dip by a hundred thousand dollars. There's always going to be those possibilities. So, the theory is, is if we keep that, which by the way, is one of our smaller increments of revenue, the property tax revenue, if we make sure that we stay pretty much at the maximum, that we can collect, and there would be caught down the line, because even if you don't this year, if you don't raise it at all this year, that doesn't mean we can do 4% next year. So, it's a way of keeping up with, and not even totally with the real inflation, but in some way, keeping your revenues generating with the cost of inflation and also keeping your portfolio as diverse as possible.
So, what kind of sliding scale do we have for those that are on, that own homes like the elderly? Do we have any kind of sliding scale, or do they have to figure it out?
Not, not on property taxes, okay? There are some breaks, maybe one break in state law, but there's also, and we worked on it some years ago, and it kind of ended up, going by the wayside, we did an application, a warrant for the district register, for the Warren District, which got all the way to the keeper, and then the keeper wanted more, and then the issue kind of got dropped from there. If you own a contributing property in a national register district, your property taxes can be reduced by 50 cents.
But then they are, they may get somewhere else.
Probably so.
Ms. Jenkins? I am ready to make a motion. Okay, well, let me make sure that we're up here in the boardroom. Ms. Hanson? Ms. Plante? All right, make your motion.
I move to approve resolution R-1908, fixing, levying, and assessing the amount to be raised by the city of Bisbee for property taxation and fixing and determining the property tax rate for the 2019, 20 fiscal year in the amount of 2.9152 per $100 of assessed valuation and providing for severability.
Second. Ms. Cordova?
Councilmember Pollak?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Nay.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Nay.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes, 52, or 42.
Did you get that sample?
Yeah. Item number six. Discussion of possible approval of the appointment of Teresa Coleman as the city manager affecting July 29, 2019, and the approval of an employment agreement with Ms. Coleman. And we have a speaker signed up, and that would be Ms. Nanette Slessor. Welcome, Ms. Slessor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, my name's Nanette Slessor, I'm a resident of Bisbee. I'm fully retired, I've been retired before, but my, my job before retirement was, I was the assistant county administrator in Kingsley County, and I was also the reference for Ms. Ruder, who applied for the position of city manager. And because of my relationship with Heather, having known her, Heather actually worked with me, I had kept up with what she had been doing over the years, and when I called to congratulate her for her position, she had just finished negotiations, and she told me she had not gotten through negotiations. So, I had the privilege of talking to the city manager today, give me kind of an additional background on the negotiations and how they occurred, and then I made some phone calls to some of my former colleagues in human resources to kind of see how we got to a place where the negotiations failed. And it's really a fundamental difference between hiring someone with qualifications and number of years of experience and hiring for a job. And I think that in my discussions with Ms. Ruder, she understood that she was being hired for a job, and I think that once you get somebody on board, I tend to see the way, once you get somebody on board, you then go to, what can we use to support the salary you're asking for? In this case, there was a breakdown in negotiations, and that probably would have been fine if everything, you know, closed after that and you hired someone else. Unfortunately, what looks or gives the appearance to some of us on the outside of some challenges with this whole process was that the new candidate was offered more money than the old candidate, who was the number one selected candidate. So, I just might offer to you to, you know, I'm hoping we don't have to hire another city manager as long as I live in Bisbee, but.
Me too.
I'm not sure how many more times you're going to come back. But I think that a lesson learned for me in this process, because I, even though I negotiated with people with very high salaries at the county, I never hired a city manager or a county manager, I was not at the level to do that, but was really that they need additional guidance when going to that, what the maximum you're willing to pay for somebody with whatever level of experience they come to, to the table. So, I just wanted to share that before you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Nanette.
Mr. Pocken? Maybe that's a perk you could do for the new city manager. Mayor, council, I'm delighted to put forward the recommendation of Teresa Coleman to serve as the city manager with an effective date of July 29, and to approve the employment agreement. You had a chance to review the employment agreement with Joel and myself two weeks ago at executive session, so you know not only what this agreement contains and recommends, but you also know a little bit about the issues that my colleague Nanette has brought forward. It is a business of variables. This is now the second time in 10 months that I have successfully brought someone to the city council to replace me, and the first one, and one of them is doing very well, thank you, and I have no doubt that Ms. Coleman will as well. I'm not going to go into any further discussion because I believe that negotiations are a dynamic process, and some succeed and some cannot. And I do not want to say anything here tonight that would do anything but lend the city of Bisbee's and my personal assistants, if Ms. Ruder needs our help wherever she may be looking for a job in the future. I don't think bringing up details of contract negotiations in the public domain serves that purpose. And so, my parting with Ms. Ruder at the end of our negotiations was mutual, and I do believe that by keeping it that way, that her opportunities for a position someplace else in Arizona are well improved. So, with that, Joel and I both heartily recommend that Teresa Coleman be appointed city manager and that the contract as presented be approved.
Thanks, sir. Council, any questions?
No questions.
Do we have a motion?
I move that we appoint Teresa Coleman to serve as the city manager of the city of Bisbee effective July 29, 2019, and approve the employment agreement with Ms. Coleman.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, Ms. Cordova?
Councilmember Pollak?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes unanimously.
Item number seven.
Thank you, I feel so much better, Mr. Mayor.
And Ms. Slessor, thank you very much for your comments. Item number seven, a discussion and possible approval of a professional services contract for interim city attorney with Leadbetter LLC. Mr. Pocken?
Okay, as you discussed at your last regular, no, it was last week at the special conference, I'm sorry, you reviewed and asked for us to notify the attorney firm of Leadbetter LLC to serve as the interim city attorney. As council is already aware, this is a fixed-rate contract set at $10,000 per month for the next six months, but it can be terminated on an earlier basis with notice if we so desire. And so, I think that you've all received and had a chance to review Mr. Leadbetter's firm's contract, and staff recommends approval.
Questions, council? Here, unanimous, we have a motion.
I move that you approve the professional services contract for interim city attorney with Leadbetter LLC.
I second.
We have a motion, we have a second, Ms. Cordova?
Councilmember Pollak?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes unanimously.
And, Mr. Mayor, just one additional comment, the goal statement for the full-time position that you directed us to advertise for is on the street.
Great. And Mr. Leadbetter will be the person, in person at the upcoming meetings. He called today, and I told him he was at towards the end of the agenda, there was no reason to drive down for two hours.
So, we'll go like this, in the.
Yes, you will, yes, you will. Item number eight, a discussion of possible approval of a tourism marketing agreement with a contractor and a return to the position description, a visitor center manager, and the authority to advertise tourism, marketing, and be visitor center manager. Mr. Pocken, you have that item, that you've been able to get about four things into one sentence.
Is that all one sentence? I apologize.
Oh, it's okay.
There's a comma there, it's good. Oh, okay, as long as we got a couple of commas, that's enough. As you know, this position was discussed approximately six months or so ago, and some recommendations were made to you by the High Bisbee Committee for a new position and a new rate of pay with a somewhat different job description. Major difference between the job description that you adopted and the job description that we had with the previous two visitor center managers was that there was, even though the previous incumbent was pretty heavy to the marketing aspect of things, that wasn't in the job description, and recognizing that was causing us to have some difficulty in identifying an appropriate candidate which to hire. As you know, we went through that exercise of trying to hire somebody when I first returned in March, and we ended up coming out of it without a candidate. More discussion ensued, and in a series of different meetings with a series of different people, an idea was put forth, which I was involved in but won't take the credit for, even though I believe it's a good one, because I'm recommending it, that because of the peculiar nature of the skill set necessary to arrive at the kind of marketing strategy that the city has indicated that it would like to have, that was making it number one more difficult to identify the right person for the job that was all-inclusive, and in addition to that, it was somewhat unclear just what else was going to be done. And we all know that within the previous position, there's a higher level of reliance on manning a physical facility to. to interface with our visitors when they come up to see us in, in order to help them find what they want once they arrive in Bisbee. So, the idea came about that what we could do is we could, with the visitor center physical position, go back to the job description that we had before, and then go out and find somebody who specialized in doing marketing programs, okay? I think what we found out over the last six months is those are two somewhat distinct skillsets, and it's a pretty hard immersion into one job. So, I did have a chance to, one of the people that we had a chance to interface with in the course of these discussions was the chairman of the Ibisbee Committee. I know he's had discussion with members of this committee. And I spoke with Mr. Stern as recently as four o'clock this afternoon, and he had indicated that they were agreeable to this idea. So, specifically, the idea would be this. Go back to the original job description, which is still a valid job description with the city, and then seek a contractor to specialize in marketing program. Now, part of the discussions that I had, and it's, you know, no secret, because she's been very involved in it, was with Jen Luria. And I had asked Jen to provide me with scope of work, so that you would have something to identify as what this marketing program would be. Jen provided me with more than just a scope of work that came in the form of a proposal. I understand that unless you were to designate a sole source contractor, we need to go out and solicit. Jen understands that as well. So, what we're asking you to do this evening is to pass a motion authorizing staff to advertise for a marketing, a tourism marketing firm for the city, and to direct staff to hire a visitor center manager. That's either a two-part motion or two motions, whichever you prefer. And, and by the way, if, if there are any questions about the marketing piece that you would like to ask, Ms. Luria is here.
I have one, one question. I, I'm sorry, I'm fuzzing on how long we have to advertise.
Fifteen days.
Fifteen days. So, if this gets out tomorrow, we can actually, by the next meeting, we could actually bring somebody on board, because we're going to start getting close to tourist seasons coming up, and we need somebody there. Okay, so we, we're on the cusp, but we're, we, we're right up.
Everything I bring up seems like we've only got two weeks to do it.
Yeah. I understand you. Trying to figure out how that's working there. Questions, Mr. Pollak, you have any questions?
Just one, sure. Can, can you tell me the cost to benefit ratio for having two visitor centers? What the, what the rationale is behind having two visitor centers?
Having two separate visitor centers, is that what your question is?
Yes.
I wasn't party to that thing when it happened, so I really can't tell you what kind of rationale or analysis was used to determine why that is. When I came back in March, it was already happening.
I can cite some of that information for the public. The reason was that there were a number of people that found difficulty in trying to get up to the other visitor center for the Queen Mine Tour, by walking, they were. And a downtown center would help. Second thing is that the visitor center at the Queen Mine Tour was providing materials for all Cochise County. The one at the Mine Tour, I'm sorry, at the museum provides only Bisbee. And that position is half paid by the museum. It's, it's not fully paid by the city. So, that was the rationale.
Each visitor center is staffed at this age, am I correct?
No, the one at the museum is only staffed five days.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any questions, Council?
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
So, you said you're posting for the tourism director, or you're posting for a tourism center manager?
Tourism center manager.
Okay.
Visitor center manager.
Yeah, okay.
That would be at the old salary schedule.
Right.
And what we figured, based on what we thought it would cost for a marketing consultant, we feel very comfortable that we can keep within budget for the visitor center that you have already approved. So, this is not going to be a budget question.
Okay.
Anything else, Council? Yes, ma'am.
I just think it's a good solution. I've always thought we've done well with the visitor center manager. And of course, marketing is different, and we have the perfect person for that. But it's just a, it wouldn't be a contract, right?
Yes, that's correct.
As far as the marketing. No, I think it's a great solution.
Right, we have a motion, if it's a great solution.
Okay, well, I move to authorize staff to advertise for a person or firm to engage in tourism marketing for the City of Bisbee, as well as move to direct staff to hire a visitor center manager.
Thank you, I'll second that. All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Item nine. Discussion of possible approval to authorize the Bisbee Police Department to make the necessary changes to the intersection of Deautremont Avenue and Shattuck Street, effectively making it an all-way stop. Chief, a challenge.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, city staff, members of the public. I received a, a call from a concerned citizen who lives in that, on that four-way intersection, concerned with the traffic flow there, and the limited visibility on the northbound traffic coming from Shattuck. I went out there and took a look at it, and it is extremely, the visibility is extremely limited. When Mr. Harwell got here, I approached him with this problem, and he discussed it, and he went ahead and took a look at it, and produced the document that was in the packet. I was very pleased with the work he did with that, and he was very thorough. And he agreed as well, we both agree that that, that needs to be an all-way stop for safety purposes. So, with that in mind, that staff supports this, this challenge.
Agreed. Question or two particularly?
I don't have any questions, I have a statement. Thank you, I almost got protsized there the other day.
Which one have you failed to heal?
No. I can't see. It's a good thing I creeped, had I got creeped, I'd have nailed it. Jen had the same problem with that intersection.
All right, any other council member have any opinions? I was having trouble, sorry. All right, do we have a motion?
I move to authorize city staff to make the necessary changes to the intersection of Deautremont Avenue and Shattuck Street, effectively making it an all-stop, always stop. I second that.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, say the aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you, motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Chief, and thank you, Mr. Harwell, we really appreciate it. City managers report.
Just one item tonight, Mr. Mayor, so that we can all make our exit. As indicated on your agenda, back to tourism. There was a lot of interest for the last couple of months over how we were going to do the application for the Arizona Office of Tourism Advertising Funds, and who was going to do it. Even though I assured everyone for several months that we had it under control, I kept getting the requests, and so finally, my, my main caller, who called me twice a week to ask if we've done it yet, I finally told him, I said, "Look, I've got, this is it. The grant doesn't even come out until this Friday, and I've got more help than I need." So, anyway, with the help of the loaners mechanic and Jen Luria, who both sat at my desk last week when, when the fork came, and all this stuff, of course, is applied for online now, no paper. So, the two of them sat at the desk, made the selections, filled in all the blanks, I looked at it and said, "Okay," and they hit the send button. So, we're off to the races, and it will probably be another month maybe before we hear back from AOT. So, Ms. Coleman will report to you when the, when the grant is awarded. So, anyway, I want to, and I want to thank you again, Jen, for taking the time to come over and help us with it. We also did get some input from some other citizens on, you know, some of the ways we should advertise with the OT grant. Now, that grant is going to consume $28,000 of your $33,000 advertising budget, okay? It's a good thing we know that, because that helped us do the calculations for the other recommendation that I made for you tonight. But with some other possible grants that we can anticipate coming over the course of the reading of this year, I think we'll be able to leverage even more dollars to make sure that our story gets out to tourists all over America and continue to run. So, that is my report.
Thanks, Mr. Puckin, and thank you for your assistance in getting us where we are right now, filling the sections and so forth. And, Mr. Higgins? No? Trust me, I'm not.
No, it's already taken care of.
Throw it out?
She's out. I moved that we adjourn. We have a motion, we have a second. Those in favor, adjourned and signify, I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Of course, my friend used to say the ayes were handed over the nose.
That might become a question.